The Carolina County Board of Supervisors meeting March tenth, twenty twenty-two order. First on the agenda is an invocation. And Mr. Donnell Howard, if you would please leave, give the invocation for us this evening. Could we all please stand?
Good evening. Father God, we thank you for this occasion you're giving unto us tonight, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that as we go forward in the business of the hour, we pray that your Spirit will be with us. Give us the wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and spirit of worship as we go about. And I pray, Lord, that everything will be done in your will. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. In attendance this evening is Mr. Clay Forehand from the Madison District, Mr. Jeff Black from Western Carolina, Mrs. Nancy Long from Port Royal, Mr. Reginald Underwood from Reed Church, Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Metapanay District, and I'm Jeff Sealy representing the Bowling Green District. Opening board comments, Mr. Clay Forehand.
None at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, and Mr. Black.
Yeah, just a few, first of all, just really quickly, I want to thank Mr. Shebel. You approved for picking up trash along Lady Smith Road. Still a little bit out there, but it looks a whole lot better than, I mean, it was looking kind of like a landfill out there for a while. So I do, I do thank you for that. The second thing is, I do just kind of want to mention in general, when, and I'm sure kind of maybe all of our supervisors feel this way, comes out of something that I had to deal with this past week. When I have a, when we have constituents call us about a concern in the county, our job is to address that concern. I think every supervisor up here would, would agree that anytime you get a call from a citizen, and just kind of make sure that it's not, we're not trying to get people on the defensive, they work for the county. It's just, we have to address the concern when a citizen calls us. And if, and I think that just Mr. Call, I'm sure your staff knows that, and that wasn't necessarily with someone in your staff, but our job is to ask questions, and I will do that as long as I'm elected, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black, Mrs. Long.
I just have a short comment in that, at public comment last, at our last meeting, there was concern about AP Hill and the closing of the hunting and fishing. I did meet with them. They made them very aware that turkey season is coming up in April, and they're working hard to meet what was said to them or requested of them and still get everything open and on time for turkey season. So I expect to hear a report from them sometime in the next week, and then I will pass that on to whoever's, especially Mr. Kevin Down there, as to when they are open for hunting again. But we are working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Long, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a concern, and I'm glad that Mr. Black brought up his, made his comment about citizens calling. I have an individual from my district who serves on the Social Services Board, and she called me with some concerns regarding how they feel that we as board members may be overstepping our ground bounds in terms of operation. So I would, I would like to have Ms. Snead come in so we can have a conversation about what it is that they feel that we're maybe not handling it properly, or come in and at least so we can understand what our role is in terms of serving on that board, as one of our board, Jeff serves on the board. But, but I don't, but you know.
Mr. Underwood, I'll gladly answer your questions because I'm on that board, and I will gladly chat with you.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm going to come up with.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take the liberty of asking a few since everybody else didn't. But did anybody aside from me get a letter from Aquos saying they were proposing a rate increase?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I'd ask this to Mr. Colley also.
It's part of the, it's part of the last, it's actually part of the last eight, uh, rate increase. It goes back to the, um, they've asked for two separate increases. They asked for a increase on the, um, basically the rates, and then they were, they were asking for a new infrastructure charge, and the State Corporation Commission allowed them to start like a kind of a testing one to, to see kind of a,
Another one, okay.
All right, um, kind of a probationary, I guess, uh, it's, uh,
Office, there's still a little confusion about why are we getting those? And, and some folks seem to think the county is responsible for them pumping it out, but it's really a state matter. Kind of trying to respond to the Chesapeake Bay SEBLAT, Chesapeake Bay Local Assistance Department Division? Okay. But we'll send those questions to Mr. Fincham. But just so citizens know, every five years, according to state code, you're supposed to pump out your septic system to make sure it's, there's no overflow. And, um, April third, Mr., or April twenty-third, Mr. Sealy, there's a broadband meeting in Richmond for, um, for those things. And I, I also met with the schools IT folks. I think most of the board had a presentation before, and if you didn't, I'll, I'll make sure I send it to you. But they made a presentation to us about expanding broadband and ways that we could actually use the school's discounted rate to connect them and the libraries and maybe some other citizens on the way. Bless you. So that was the first meeting, and I'd like to meet with Mr. Sadler and them again, and then we'll follow up with the broadband committee. And I think that was, I wanted to do a constituent meeting, Mrs. Hall, but I think I'm going to hold out for a couple of weeks and just see at the end of the month how things look before we get together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Couple of things. I first want to say that I attended the awards for Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department. It was a great event. They always do a good job with food, and they recognized their top three responders, which was the number of hours those three folks spent was incredible. My second, I've been able to obtain a scoring card. I just got it yesterday, which is the scorecard that was used for the broadband initiative from the state for the nineteen million dollars. So, Mr. Thomas, I'd like us to get together and take a look at that and figure out, I have talked to Atlantic Broadband because they were pretty upset at the amount of time and money they'd spent, and they didn't get awarded anything. And there was a fair sum of money in our proposal, in the collective proposals from the counties. So I'd like us to sit down, Mr. Thomas, take a look at that, and then probably meet with Atlantic and our broadband committee now that we have something that we can concrete look at. The last, and since no other board member brought it up, I just wanted to, Mr. Thomas had mentioned, you know, the coronavirus is everywhere. I mean, you're seeing it in the news every day. Our biggest risk is our fire and rescue and law enforcement folks that show up to a scene, that somebody ends up with that, and then they end up quarantined. And I just, I'm hoping that we've taken some precautions and some steps for that for both law enforcement and fire and rescue, both on the volunteer side and the paid side, so that we have some sort of plan. I saw the view graphs that came out from the State Health Department about it. I don't know that they were much help. The one thing, the two interesting things that I've learned is washing your hands and using hand cream actually prevents a fair amount of the virus transmission. And, um, you can't buy sanitary wipes anywhere now. So if you're looking, good luck. But Chief Loftus, do you want to say a few words just so the folks know that we have actually, because I know I've had a few questions, and I figured it was probably already being taken care of.
We were extremely fortunate, and we got ahead of the curve on the ordering. Uh, I was talking with Mr. Shebel tonight, and he tried to use some of the same sources to source viruside and a few other things that we use on a daily basis. So, uh, he was unsuccessful. So we did stock up on that. We are also stocking up for ten months on all of our EMS supplies because what we're finding is anything that we're using, typically rubber gloves, down to masks, is just going off the shelves as quickly as we can. So we do have a good stockpile of, of those cleaning agents. We will be passing out instructions to all of our folks here in the near future on how to handle those patients. We are screening patients before we bring them to the ER, and so we're doing that in our electronic tablets and recording that and presenting that to the hospital. That is a requirement now that we give them some questionnaires prior to bringing them in there. So, uh, for us, our best approach is put the mask on the patient, not ourselves wear the mask, although we do have a supply of N ninety-five masks, which are several grades up from the surgical mask we put on the patient. So we are preparing for this just as we did Ebola and the H one N one and those other diseases prior to this one. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chief, before you go, when we talked, you did mention you have a, a good supply of the jackets and things you wear.
Yeah, we have a good supply of Tyvek suits left over from the Ebola ramp up, if you will. Yep.
Okay. And that's what they wear when they go see somebody, they have.
Right. Mr. Colley?
We had a planning meeting today with all department heads, at least all major department heads, people with a lot of employees and Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue. Since then, Mr. Shebel has ordered hand sanitizer stations, wall mount and, and floor mount, because I did have a clerk's office call wanting things. So we, we, we're ramping up because that's one of the things we feel like we can do the best is put as much hand sanitizer out in all the public spaces. We've also worked to order some extra cleaning supplies and sprays and things to wipe down. Believe it or not, as much as they may see people, I don't know, some days DMV's got more people in it than anybody sees all day long, um, when they're wrapped almost to the outside door all day long down there, and they kind of run back from DMV to the Treasurers Office. So our, our building sees a fair amount of traffic, not every day, but for whatever reason, some days. So we, we want to take care of all those public spaces, the window and plan and everywhere where the public comes. So we're, we're already putting a plan together to try to keep our employees as healthy as possible. Also, we'll be sending out a memo to everybody if they've got any kind of fever or not feeling good to stay home and not come in and, and who knows what they've got. They may just have the flu, which is still, you don't want them coming in with the flu and infecting the rest of the staff. So we're all taking those precautions and trying to remind people how we're going to try to operate through this to minimize as much as we can.
And did you put the Department of Health thing on the county website? Their instructions from last week?
I got it running, I got it running on a bit chip in my building, but I mean, I'll, I'll get, I'll get it out there.
Okay.
I'll get it out there.
We, we have some, we have some direction from the, the State Board of Health about what to do, and we want to make sure that, that folks know that. Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Amendments to the agenda. I was going to propose that we move the sports complex to an agenda item rather than a presentation and reports. Well, I would just, I mean, we'll still get it over with. I just put it under new business because I think there's going to be more to it than just a report, just based on what I saw sitting on the table. Four A?
Four A works.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to move the update on Virginia Sports Complex to item number four A.
Do I have a second? It's just a cleaner way to, to put it on the agenda than under presentations.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, and I just, I'm just doing it for housekeeping purposes for where, for the new additional information that's here on the table in case anybody hasn't seen it. Well, I think we'll get to it long before the break because there's not that much between there and the. I have, I have one change to the agenda, four A, to move the Virginia Sports Complex. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed? We'll call vote. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood? Mr. Thomas? And I vote aye. Motion carries. All right, first on the agenda is presentations. Report from the Carolina County Agricultural Fair, Francine Whitaker. Come on down, Fran.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and county government. As you know, I'm Francine Whitaker, President of the Carolina County Agricultural Fair, and this is my twelfth year in that role, and it's my pleasure to be here. And we're going to talk about the twenty nineteen Carolina County Ag Fair, fair, that year in review. Our fair started off pretty sadly for us in, in twenty nineteen because one of our longtime trustees, Mr. George Grant, passed away on June eighth, just a few days prior to our fair starting. So we did do a little dedication in his memory as you came into the entrance of our fair. But despite that damper on our event, we still feel like we were able to get ourselves together and, and have a successful event for the Carolina County residents. Okay, we had ten thousand attendees, no rain. And as you know, we had a mud bath the year before, and that affected our attendance. It got down to less than eight thousand. So we were very excited about that, and we felt like perhaps George was looking out for us with that. We do exit surveys at our fair, and we had very favorable feedback from those. We find that they're very important, and that gives us information on what we needed to improve, what we did good, and maybe continue on doing those good things. People, uh, one of the good things is our porta potties were clean, and we felt like that was a very valuable piece of information to, to have for us. Okay, what do we do at the fair? You know, we have Caroline's Barn. There you see our chairman, Sissy Coleman, and she's wearing a milked cow, a cow at the county fair headband that she had, and that's what we had available for everybody who milked our cow model. And we not only had that, which is our, we call our interactive milking cow exhibit, but she was in charge of the livestock shows that we had for the four H kids and the various animals in the petting zoo area that is very loved by all, and that's very much a part of what we do because we are an agricultural fair. Of course, our Home Goods Department is one of our big areas as well, and that is led by our Home Goods Chairperson, Masine Williams. And this year, we had, or last year rather, we had over five hundred entries with numerous displays and community exhibits. You can see we've got tourism, that was in that Moya Building this year, and they welcome people as they came into the home goods area. As, whoops, no input, what does that mean? Did I hit something? Oh, I'm sorry. We had various other exhibits as well. We had our produce, our typical baked goods, our display of table setting exhibit, and we just, we just have a good time with people entering that contest area. Then our Heritage Areas, an area that we, area we've been developing the past seven to eight years. We've added a working sawmill, and people seem to delight in that interactive experience as well. Actually, going back to the early nineteen hundreds, we have an actual working sawmill in place. We have our antique tractors. We have our antique equipment that's in the Heritage Building, and it's just fun for all. It's also an, an opportunity for people and children alike to see how things were in the county. And one of the things we showcased last year and asked, were there any century farms in Carolina County? A farm that had been in continuous operation for a hundred years plus. So we had a couple of farms come forward and give us some picture displays. Hopefully, we're going to reach out again this year and see if we can get some more because there are several one hundred year old farms in the county. Of course, one of our favorite things is act, interacting with the school kids, and we call it the School Day at the Fair. And this is on Thursday during our fair, when the fair is not open to the public. And we have partnered with the Carolina County Public Schools, and we provide this experience for the kids that are in summer school in grades K through five. And we had over a hundred and sixty students this past year, as well as the adults that came. And we provide hands-on experiences for them. They get, of course, to see things in Caroline's Barn, do the interactive milking activity. They had a demonstration of home goods. They come to Heritage, they actually shell corn in the old-fashioned corn cellar. And then most important, the farm to table, which is an educational experience that they see farm products and how things become actual products you see in the grocery store. And then they get to actually taste those things when they come back for their lunch. So we have done that for two years, and we've also reached out to them this year to provide that activity again for these summer school kids. And that's one of the fun things that we do, do at the fair. Of course, we also last year had the public school senior staff come visit us during that school day. They came in the afternoon, and they got to actually do some of the same things that the kids had done earlier in the day. You can see, one of them actually took a pony ride, milked our cow, and just generally had a good time and, and get an experience of what we had provided for the children earlier that day. Of course, fun and games. What is a Carolina County Ag Fair without fun and games? And we really try to emphasize activities for the children. We've got our children's area in the Martin Pavilion. We do the hay bale toss. They're able to do crafts, pedal tractor pull, you name it, play in the corn bin, and do all kinds of fun things because it is all about the children here in our county. And the other contests that we have that are for all ages, the famous watermelon eating, which I know our Representative Whitman comes every year, he does that. Hay bale toss for all ages, corn sucking, rooster crowing, hog calling, and all these fun things that's for all ages to participate in. They receive ribbons, and they just love to, to do these activities. It's fun. And then, of course, more summer fun. And you can see where we've got the midway there, and we've got our Mandy the Clown there. She's coming back this year. We had pony rides. The Turkey Hill Cow is coming back this year, and they've been all very generous to us over several years. They come and they bring their, their large cow exhibit, which is wonderful, as well as free Turkey Hill ice cream samples and iced tea and lemonade. So we've been very pleased to have been a partner with them these past several years. And here we have acts also throughout our grounds, our Mandy the Clown, Circa Stella, Teeny Weeny Circus, and Dennis Beach was something we had last year. Chain saw, chainsaw carver, and that was very much an interesting exhibit that people like to participate in that, and actually his things were for sale. So a lot of people purchased these statues and various things that he carved. It was very interesting. We're having him come back this year as well. So if you missed it last year, come back and see us, and you'll have an opportunity to see it again. Of course, what is our fair without our live entertainment? And we provide this with no cover charge. You know, our mission is basic, we don't have a cover charge for our bands. And that's not like other fairs in the Commonwealth. They often charge extra admission for their various bands. But we are lucky because we have sponsors that sponsor these entertainment acts, and that's what allows us to be able to provide them. You can see we also have the Courthouse School of Ballet. We have those young people come, and they put on an exhibit on Saturdays for us as well as our music entertainment that we have in the evenings. Of course, what is the Fair Association? We're a nonprofit five oh one C three organization. We are all volunteer. We work year round to provide this main event that we have. Three thousand plus hours were devoted to the twenty nineteen fair's success, and we felt like we were able to support our mission of encouraging the understanding of agriculture history as it relates to Caroline and provide education about our agriculture, business, and community activities. We feel like it is a positive promotion for Caroline County. One of the things that we're able to do is we go to the annual fair convention, which is held at the Homestead Resort. And we do attend this convention at our own expense, but we just don't go to the convention and have a great, wonderful time, which we do, but we also do things while we're there. We are on, members on the Board of Directors. One of our members provided the DJ activities for our meet and greet night. We provide judges for the student scholarship competition. We conduct the fair judging school. We provide door prizes and live auction gifts as well that help support the scholarship program that the Virginia Association of Affairs sponsors. And here you can see we have the attendees for the twenty twenty fair. And here, we're going to highlight our Virginia Fair's Judging School. The significance of this is that this is something that was started several years ago, spearheaded by our Home Goods Person, Masine Williams. There was a lack of qualified judges throughout the Commonwealth to judge these fairs. So she, along with Ms. Hazel Staley, who's now deceased, they spearheaded this, and now we're working in conjunction with Virginia Tech, Virginia Corporate Extension on doing this school. Over a hundred people have been certified to judge home goods competitions throughout the Commonwealth, including the state fair. Several classes are held throughout the Commonwealth each year in, um, from southwest of Virginia to northern Virginia, as well as at the convention. So here you see Masine here with some of her certified judge school instructors that helped at the twenty twenty convention. And we are an award-winning fair, and you know that we are because we come here every year and tell you that. So we, one of the things we do at convention is we enter the communication awards. And what this does is highlights various publicity things that we have done to promote our fair. Things such as our brochure, our posters. But this particular picture you see here was a photo essay display that we did talking about the twenty nineteen fair. And this one, a blue ribbon in our, in our area, as well as we were best of showing the whole state of Virginia for our photo essay display board. And we're very excited about that because that's a hard contest to win. And just want to say, with all the publicity we do, you know our publicity is done in-house. And you see the lady on the left, Ms. Tate, she is our publicity chairman, and she is the one who generates and creates all the things that we have. In fact, she made this PowerPoint up today for us. So we certainly appreciate that. It saves us a lot of money. We don't use outside vendor for that. And so we're very fortunate that we do have an in-house talented person to do those things. And here we see Masine Williams. She was the twenty twenty VAF Fair Person of the Year. This is an award that's given to one person at convention, and it is to a person who has contributed not only to their local fair but to the fair organization or the fair industry in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And she won that in twenty twenty, and is, we're very excited about that. And she also was the first recipient of a Hazel Staley Volunteer Award that was given in twenty sixteen, which was another state award. So she's the only person in the Commonwealth that has both awards. So we're very delighted that she's a part of the Carolina County Ag Fair. So I'm very excited about that, and you know she's my sister too, so I have to say something good about it. So, anyway, very excited about that. But none of this would be possible. We couldn't have our main event, the annual fair, unless we have sponsors, whether they be individuals, small businesses, corporate, or government. And you can see here, this is your banner that we have on display during the fair because you support us for our county fair by your, you're making, we have a budget item here for us. And so we're very excited that you do that, and we certainly hope you continue to do that because we feel like that we are a good venue for Caroline County. We promote the county, and that's what's very important. As you can see, we try to make this affordable for all. We have regular admission is staying at five dollars, tenant under is free, and then we have various admission specials throughout the week. What that means, and we've aligned with like with co-op, the REC Co-op Connections Card. You come and say, I have a co-op connection card, you can buy one, get one free. So basically, two people can get in for five dollars. So we can do just about anything to promote and encourage attendance at this fair. Of course, we not only do our annual event, which is the fair in June, but we give back also. With the four H kids, we try to showcase their work because in the home goods area, we have special ribbons that are put on their entries that tells what level they are in four H, whether they're a cloverbud or an. 4H, whether they're a cloverbud, or an intermediate, or a senior, what have you. So try to showcase that, as well as they want to have special projects. I know Ms. Rollins comes and has her sewing club, and they are actively doing a demonstration throughout the fair, right? Yeah, Jesse's there, right? So they do that each year, and that's, and people really get to visualize, see what these young kids are doing. And then with the Future Farmers of America, we support the Caroline Middle School and the Caroline High School chapters. We are the host for their banquet, which they're going to have in April this year. And we keep an ongoing dialogue with Mr. Gravitt with the high school as to what they're doing and with that because that's very much agriculture-based, and we really like to support and know what is going on with agriculture in the county. Another thing is we provide, because these children now in the schools have to have lots of service hours for various things, and we provide that opportunity as well. They come and volunteer at our fair, and they're given documentation that supports that. And so we're able to provide opportunity for them to do that, and it helps us as well because they are very instrumental in assisting and staffing our children's area especially. And we are continuing to also provide a $500 scholarship to graduating Caroline High School senior producing a Voc Tech career, so pursuing, rather, I'm sorry. So we do that, and we feel like this is very important, just as important as our annual fair as well. Other things that we give back in support of the community, we've done, we have the 4H Ag Days. That's for the fourth graders. We have this, they come to the fair, they use our fairgrounds for that. Then, of course, I'd already talked about the School Day at the fair that we have during our fair. And this year, in 2020, we're going to be a site of a Relay for Life Celebration Event that's scheduled for April 25th. So we're allowing them to use our area free of charge. We don't charge for anything like that at all, and to support that activity that's happening. And then our free public events, the Fall Fun Festival, the Last Saturday in October, and Caroline Spring Festival, which used to be Ladysmith Day. Y'all are very familiar with this because you also provide some funding for those two events as well. But they are give-back free events for the community to come and participate. And of course, what's important, we want you to spring into summer with us in 2020. Our fair is going to be June 17th through 20th. And we're very excited. We've already got lots of things lined up. We're just hoping we're going to have good weather, and we want to see all of you at the 2020 fair. And I certainly hope to have your continued support for our organization. I would like to take a minute because volunteers are so important to us. I do have a few of our volunteers in the audience, and I would like them to stand to be recognized if they could, or would. Do you have any questions for me? Who are the volunteers? We have Linda Tate, Nancy Cabiness, Jackie Rosenmarkel, one of our trustees, and then Hunter Gravitt, who's part of our fair organization. He's also a teacher at the high school ag department. He's done, doing a really good job with that and with the FFA. We've been monitoring his progress these past several years, and we're very pleased. Because you know a lot of our fair board members are old FFA guys, so very important to us. There any other questions?
Questions from the board.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you for the presentation. Go ahead, Mr. Forham.
Is the date in June working out better than the July date?
Well, you know, our date is driven by our Midway contract. It seems like it's going very well because we are then able to partner with the schools because summer school's in session, and with our volunteers, as well as the school day. The weather's not quite as intense as it is, as it was in July. I like the June date myself because I can hang, I can do nothing 4th of July, okay? Finally. So I think, honestly, truthfully, I think it is working out better. But again, it is driven by our contract with the Midway provider. So, but yes, it's better for a lot of reasons.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the great things in the community.
Thank you. Thank you for your money.
The county residents enjoy the fair immensely. Up next is an update from the Caroline County Complete Count Committee, Jesse Rollins. You can't leave with the fair. I know you're part of it. You're next.
Yep, I'm ready for cotton candy, not the milk in the cow part, but anyway. Good evening. I'm Jesse Rollins from the Mattapinai District, but I'm here wearing the hat of the Complete Count Census Chair. And just want to kind of give you an update. It's showtime. The National Census website is about to go live any day now. Banners and yard signs are popping up all over Caroline County. And I have yours here with me tonight.
You can prop it up on the front of, or on the back or the front of the podium, whichever works best. Put it on the side.
Oh, I got one for each of you, and I'd like a photo op because I'm putting together a review with all of this when it's all said and done. I've posted the Caroline logo, which is I count, and flyers on many community social media pages, and have asked many to do the same. Please take this information to your churches and other community places where you eat and visit. Caroline Library will be available for those without internet services, and several churches will have opportunities for their members, especially their senior population, to get counted through the use of their internet. Thank you to those who have posted on their district and personal sites. We are getting ready for the 2020 census. Census information will be hitting our mailboxes. Some of us could be as early as this weekend, next week. The mailings are going to start out around the middle of March, and we are indeed at the middle of March. Your invitation to respond will have your unique 12-digit census ID number and website address to complete online, as well as the 800 number to call. I did get an email today from George Millsap that now includes that website and phone number, as well as a sample of the census. Information like that has not been released before. I imagine to keep folks from calling the number that, you know, they're not ready to answer. The hope is that most will respond online or call, thus eliminating the need for an enumerator to visit their home. Information on the census will be available at upcoming science and STEM nights at the schools. I've spoken at several community churches, town meetings, the school board will have a table at Mayberry Day, and pretty much anywhere that I'm invited or can have a display. The 2010 census data from the United States Census Bureau Quick Facts for Caroline County says we had a population of around 28,545 for 2010 census, with an estimated July 2019 count of 30,722. Now, we know how data is. It is as whoever puts it up and whatever they want to say. So as I share this information throughout the county, I let people know that this is just data that you find when you Google. Doesn't have anything to do with exact numbers. I'm not in those weeds. That's your job. But what they need to understand is that when they partake of the census, they are equal to our dollar amount that comes back to help us in Caroline County. So if these numbers are anywhere near true, there's a difference of about 2,227 people, which, if counted, could equal an additional $4,454,000 in federal funds per year for the next 10 years in Caroline County. And that's based on the Richmond data that says each person is valued at approximately $2,000. And as you notice, the census information that is picking up in commercials and other people's flyers, 2,000 is a magic number, and getting people to realize that you're worth $20,000 over a 10-year span. But we have to work together to create a sense of community within our community. Please look to your district and know what churches or businesses can host a census count event. Unfortunately, there will be a negative response about the census, and some have even said, why bother? I feel if people are given the information they need, they will make an informed decision. Let's continue to work together to reframe the negative talk and say, yes, we are from Caroline, and I count. Count me in to do my part to bring additional funds to my community. Count me in to include my children and family in the census process. Count me in to post and share on social media. Count me in to make sure my district is counted 100%. Count me in to increase our 2010 census data numbers so that Caroline County will have an increase in federal funds to help support school, fire and rescue, police, and all agencies and organizations that serve the citizens of Caroline County. Our census event, our April 1 census event, will be held on April 1 from 5 to 7 in the Caroline High School gym. Community organizations and agencies will be on hand to share information about services they provide in Caroline County. There will also be student performances from each of the schools. Board of Supervisors and school board members are invited to be on hand to help promote participation in the 2020 census. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Mrs. Long?
Yes, Jesse, you said on the library, will all the branch libraries be able to help citizens go online and do the census?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Underwood?
First, Ms. Rollins, thank you so much for all that you do. I know it's a lot of time.
Yes, next year's going to be a paid position.
I know that you're spending, I'm going to come to that. I know you're spending some of your own money going here and there and posting, and I was just surprised that there was no money available for those types of expenses. And board members, I was shocked that there's just not even $50 to the people who are putting these signs out all across the county to ensure that people are counted, so that we will get as much money as possible. And I think, I think we're.
I thought there were paid positions for this, Mrs. Rollins, other than that.
There are paid positions if you go WWW, but I'm appointed by my representative. And at the meeting, nobody volunteered to be chair, right, Alan? That's right, so.
This was the Citizens Committee that we created based on what we did 10 years ago. And even though the county's the same size, you're doing a lot more work than you did 10 years ago because there was a lot more people.
And there's a lot less people showing up at the committee meeting.
And that's another point. And I think Mr. Underwood had mentioned to me one of his constituents, and you and I talked last week about the amount of time. So I would agree with Mr. Underwood that we should do something, at least give you gas money or whatever, since you're going back and forth. The people that are showing up on the committee, Mr. Parton has to show up because he's part of the county. But the other people that are volunteers shouldn't really go in the hole for the county. So you have an idea what those, the number of those people are?
The number of people who have shown up.
Who are showing up at the regular, you don't have to tell us now. You can tell Mr. Parton.
No, we make that.
Yeah, you can tell Mr. Parton at a later time, and then I think he can get it back to us, and we could kind of decide if we could give them gas money or something, if that's the will of the board, the stipend. I mean, we'll figure out what it is they're spending. I mean, if you're, you're going east side, west side, north and south, there may be somebody else who's just gone a couple of trips. If you can figure out what the amount of trips are, then I think the board can work it out.
Okay. But what's important now is that.
It's on the front of the podium. We can see it from here.
The signs and banners get placed throughout the county. They are in, they're riding around in my vehicle right now, and I did spend the weekend church hopping and putting signs in key places where people could see. But yes, so tonight you can take back home with you to your district any signs that you would like to take tonight because they're in my vehicle.
Could I have, may I have that one you have there so I could put it between Mr. Sealy and I so people could see it?
I have one for each of you.
Oh, yours, okay.
Any other questions?
Jesse, where do people go to get signs and banners if they want to put one in their yard or?
We'll be working together after the meeting tonight to arrange for County Public Works to get the banners and signs to put on county properties. Other properties are based on people you know, stores, churches, that would agree to put one in their yard. So I have them, and so they are available. If you want a set number, I can make sure you get them tonight.
All right, thank you. I'll talk to you later.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Rollins, and thanks for all the work you are doing because I know what a job this is.
Yeah, at some point, I would like a picture of each of you with a sign because I'm putting together a package at the end of this so that all of this is documented. We'll do it again in 2030.
Jesse, you're wonderful.
No, it's, you're going to have to sort of see if it'll, you think it'll stay upright if you. You won't be able to walk tomorrow. Next is appointments. Broadband Advisory Committee, Citizen-at-Large. I don't have a recommendation.
Those are the ones we had in the board.
Correct.
I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem in adding those folks because what we need to do is, as I said, Mr. Sadler, you and I, if you can, and the schools meet, and then we develop a plan for the whole committee.
Yeah, like you and I to sit down and go through this Vaddy scorecard because I think it's going to be enlightening. And I haven't had a chance to go through it. I just got it.
So we've got, Mrs. Hall, we've got two people that volunteered, submitted their names. So if the board has no objection, we'll accept those two. If you want to volunteer, we want you.
No issue with that.
So that's a motion if we need it.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have, motion carries. Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Thomas.
All right, we're still looking for that person.
Okay.
And for Social Services, Mrs. Brown has asked to be reappointed, so I'm going to make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion for Mr. Thomas. Is there a second for Mrs. Betty Brown?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have, motion carries. Consent agenda.
I had something, a couple of. One of those is spelling one on the second minutes. Now, I have questions on item H.
Yeah, so I was going to, let's pull item H for now.
On B, it's just a spelling correction. And page two, it has the name of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, and they're Greek letters, so the Psi is P-S-I, and the Phi is P-H-I. Oh, that's not, that's how, that's how you say it. So you wrote it as you say. That was the only one, and then I had questions on H.
Any other? Mr. Black? So I'll take a motion for approval of A, B with two corrections, D, C, I think.
There's only one.
I thought you said it was two. No, you said.
That's one word.
Oh, I got it. I thought it was, okay. How about everything except agenda item H?
So moved, Mr. Sherman.
I have a motion, a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, agenda item H. You want to go first, Mr. Thomas?
Well, I, I really thought we had a joint arrangement, whatever you call it, that we wouldn't have to pay for a public service antenna on another county, and they wouldn't have to pay for one on us.
No. Why not? That was, we always had to pay, we're paying for multiple places, tower rent.
But if the federal government says you can't deny a tower, and we have to have a tower, I thought part of that bill was public service was free, and public safety was free. And if it's not, it ought to be.
Probably ought to be, but I don't think so. But I know we were being charged, and then somehow the bills weren't going to the right place. place, and nobody knew they weren't being, they weren't being paid.
Yeah, that's a whole other story, but.
But free, I don't.
Well, my point is, why is, why is public safety not free as part of telecommunications act, or do I need to write my congressman?
You need to write your congressman? There were provisions under the previous telecommunications act that allowed, excuse me, allowed localities, don't worry, it's not coronavirus, allowed previous, allowed localities to, in effect, reserve a spot on a tower if it was not otherwise needed by the tower company.
That was the original telecommunications act?
That was the second one. The original telecommunications act didn't have any provisions for public safety reservation of telecommunications safety space at all. And probably the first 10 to 12 towers in the county were by right towers under our ordinance. So we had no standards in place. The board amended the ordinance under the revised telecommunications act and reserved tower space on any towers that was subject to a special exception permit. It's a time we did our 911 communications, a radio system update. Those spaces were, had been already used by the telecommunications companies as spaces on their towers, because we were late to the game with our public safety radio system. And now the third round of the telecommunications act, we can't even request for reservation of spaces anymore.
Yeah, Mr. Emerson always tries to remind me not to say anything about that. I rarely pay him any mind, but we need to, we need to have some, we don't have an arrangement with Essex at all that any of their equipment is on any of our towers, that we don't have that access.
I was not involved in those discussions, I would defer to the public safety.
The tower in Essex is privately owned, wasn't owned by the county, so it just happens to be located at Supply Road in Essex, but we pay to be on it.
Can, can we make this a VACO issue? Because it really should be, public safety, and we were forced by the federal government to all go to this new digital radio system. Now, since we've gone to this new digital radio system, we need more antennas. Shouldn't public safety have some by right, or is this just another tax, and I really don't know it?
I'm not saying that they shouldn't, but a lot of communities like Hannover just put up a bunch of towers. They just spent all the extra money and own their own towers, so that's what they're gonna say, because you're trying to get on private property.
But I mean, we've said as a board, we're pretty much gonna approve whatever tower comes to us, because we want to improve communication. Maybe that's something we need to consider too, then.
The problem with owning a tower is you own the maintenance, and the maintenance sometimes eats up more than the cost of the tower over time.
Plus, it's a federal law, not a state law, so it'd be more NACO than VACO.
Well, we have to go to VACO and then to go to NACO, that's the chain of command, but really, we need to, we need to have a board decision about what we want to do in this case. I'd, if, if Hannover came to us and said, we need to put a satellite on your tower, or a tower you have access to, I would say, yeah, go right ahead.
We don't own the tower, though.
A tower we have access to, because we have access to a lot of towers that their last site was for the county. Yeah, you remember, you told me that, Ben. Okay. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna delay it or prolong it, but that's something as a board we need to make a strong statement in a lot of places for.
I just have, where was this bill going that we weren't getting it? Because it's interesting, it looks like we paid for it for a while.
We did.
And then where was it going?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have not been able to find where that bill that was missing has actually been going. It was part of the E91 communication, and until we had a conversation with the Sheriff's Department, Tanisha Mills, we didn't have a clue that the bill wasn't even being, being paid since, I believe, 2016. There was a period where for several months we didn't get a bill, then we got a bill, and then we didn't again, so we just have no records to back into it.
Was the, is the, was the sheriff's office getting the bill?
They didn't start getting the bill from what was explained to me until Tanisha found out that they weren't getting the bill and requested through Essex or whoever the company is to start sending it directly to her.
So if we hadn't asked for it, we still wouldn't be getting a bill?
Sporadically, we were getting bills, just not consistently. When I did the research, I didn't even ever remember reviewing the bill to be paid, so that's how infrequently it was coming in.
Okay, I was just, I was looking for where the bill was going, since we didn't get it, it looks like for a couple of years?
Back and forth, yes. I mean, we just, I just, I'm sorry, I just do not have an answer for that. I could not figure out how.
I was just curious if they were trying to collect from somebody else? Okay. No, it's three, it's three grand a quarter, isn't, isn't it $1,000 a month?
I believe it's almost $3,000 a month.
The bill is behind that. $3,129.66 a month.
How does that not show up in an audit?
Yeah, audit wouldn't know. Because usually, if you owe me $10,000, I'm gonna send you a bill, or I'm gonna inquire on why I have not been paid. And in the two and a half years I've been here, I've never received an inquiry from this particular company that they weren't paid. But even with their regular vendors like REC, if we miss one payment or we're late, we know about it immediately, so this was completely out of the dark.
Okay, I was just curious, because that struck me.
And my motto is, I can't pay a bill I didn't receive.
So have they asked for this money, or are we just?
Yes, they've requested the funds for those mispayments.
So they have actually figured this out?
Yes, they've submitted the invoices, and the invoices tie in with the missed bills that we have from the ones that we actually did pay that we received.
Were we putting?
It's in the budget.
Okay, so the money's in the budget, the pay, it's in the fund balance.
It's in the fund balance.
Okay, that's what.
We budgeted for it every year, didn't pay it, so it just piled into the fund balance.
So the money is there, in the fund balance, just hasn't been paid.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move we send this bill to DC. Guess I'm not gonna get a second.
I'll take a motion to consent agenda, item H for payment.
Second.
I don't have a motion yet.
So moved.
Second. Yeah, Jay was seconding your motion, Mr. Thomas.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As has a motion carried. Onto new business.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheville.
Members of the board. Agenda item number four concerns the Caroline County Community Services Center, the auditorium lighting. The current stage lighting in here is nearly 20 years old, and it's no longer supported by the manufacturer nor the original installer. During the energy performance, all the lights were changed over to LED lights, and the current controllers cannot handle that. At the last meeting, we had a nice strobe light show from the center lights out here, and tonight, there's at least eight lights that are flashing above your head at different times throughout the night, and we're fearful that the controller is not going to be supported or not gonna be able to even get parts. So before every time it's used, somebody has to come in and boot the system up and make sure everything's set, because it's not even maintaining the programming anymore. We have to reprogram it every night before the meetings to make sure that it works. Staff has worked with two vendors, got to the point with several meetings with Mr. Cully and coming in, reviewing their quotes, and they did not have the right stuff that it was necessary to do, the project. We finally have found a vendor through Daley and through a state contract holder that was able to perform everything that we were looking at to make sure that it upgrades the entire lighting system. And really, the meat and potatoes of it is the control unit on the board to your right. That whole system over there controls the lights and the functionality, and then that's linked into the rack system so that it can be controlled. Normally, that could be controlled from a touch panel device in a couple of locations that that doesn't work, so you'll see me jumping up to turn the buttons and hit buttons to turn lights on and up, because that's not working. So we had proposed two years ago, and the budget and the board had authorized $35,000 that we've been rolling over as we've been having difficulties getting the quotes. We also trying to look at doing an RFB. We didn't have enough sense from a staff level without hiring an engineer to lay out bid specifications to be able to put together all these lighting controllers and individual parts that were necessary. So Daley was able to come in at $76,310.15. It was actually higher than that, and we were able to work down some things that we didn't think we needed as we were working through, but would still give us what we needed for the meat and potatoes. So $35,000 was previously budgeted, so we are asking that the board authorize the contract with Daley for the $76,310.15, and to use money from the undesignated fund balance of $43,310.15 to make up the difference. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I was gonna say, before, I'll come in a second, that we just updated the EOC, and Chief Loftus got a grant, and that was, what, $50,000, Chief, to do that little room with controllers and everything, so. He got a grant, he can't get a grant for an EOC. Mr. Black?
Yeah, I have, Mr. Cully, I think, when we went to the VACO conference a couple years ago, there was a gentleman there, and we had, this has come to us beforehand, I think, not necessarily the lighting, that was camera, right?
That was all video, correct.
That was video, so this is, this is just lighting.
But we knew lighting was going bad.
Was it a combination, or was it, was it just a?
It was upgrading some of the same controllers in this rack that'll be upgraded this time, which is called, what is the name of that thing? Anyway, it's the operational part of the stuff in this rack that kind of ties everything together. Well, sort of, but it's got a brand name.
Oh, the Crestron system?
Crestron, it upgrades the Crestron. So we were gonna upgrade the Crestron last time, and it still needs upgrading, because it's not supported anymore. The equipment in this rack, the amplifiers and the microphones, all that stuff's good, but the brain box, it's not supported, which then ties to all that stuff and ties to the lights, and the light stuff's not supported. So we're upgrading all the lighting hardware, all the stuff in the ceiling, and then the Crestron control unit, brain box in the amperac in this closet. So part of what we were gonna do then, we're doing now.
Wouldn't it be better, though, I guess my question is, wouldn't it be better, because we've talked about doing that, because we talked about, like, when you look at other board supervisor's meeting and so forth, that has the name of the supervisor, their vote, yea or nay, and so forth, and it shows it on the video, so that way you can actually see it. I thought we were talking about that, and it just seems like, to me, not that I have a problem with this, but, because I know the lighting needs to be upgraded, but then if we start talking about doing that.
It'll tie in. The upgraded Crestron will be there, it'll tie in.
So would there be no sort of?
Wouldn't replace anything.
No, there wouldn't be any door, sort of, discount for combining the two?
Two different disciplines, really.
Yeah, the lighting and more electrical, you know, the Crestron will be there if we ever move toward tying, that would have been modernized if we move into a more modern, we're improving some things, you'll see from our stream tonight, we've, you know, we've relocated our controller down here, he's got some different equipment, we've incorporated what's on the projector into this, right into this stream, the cameras, picture in picture, so we've made some improvements to that, so we'll continue to do that, but unfortunately, the lighting is, it's gonna eventually just conk it all the way out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Long?
Just have one question. I have no problem with this either, I realize we need it, but I have been here on weekends for some special events, and also here for funerals where the portable mics are being passed around. At some time, we need to upgrade those, because they don't work real well. So if you could just put that on your to-do list, Joey?
Okay, yeah, we need to look at that, it could, I'm sure it's not in the rack.
It may not be adjusted well, because those are about, when they were new, about $700 a piece, $1,500, $700 a piece, you know, mics, for sure, so they're real good mics, but they may be gotten, somebody's adjusted the volumes out of filter on.
Yeah.
But we'll test all of them out.
All right, thank you.
Or it could have been a weak battery, because they run off of battery.
Yeah, it was a little embarrassing, especially at the funeral, when people kept going in and out, and they finally ended up putting it down because of that, so thank you.
Yeah, we can look at that, and it might be a training issue, as Mr. Brown, you know, is no longer with us. He used to be able to adjust those kind of things, and I don't think that the new staff know how to do that, so we'll work with Mr. Howard and his staff to make sure that they're trained if that's the issue. We'll look into it and find out what it is.
Mr. Thomas, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Sheville, what specifically is the purpose of the lighting system here, other than to light this meeting up and, I guess, the planning commission? Other than that, we're not using it necessarily for stage productions or anything like that on a regular basis?
No, from time to time, a church will come in here and they'll do a play. I know the school next door uses it from time to time to do different little functions in here, but it used to, when the community.
Community theater is now.
Theater was in Ladysmith, but they used to use it all the time, so, and then we would have some special events from time to time. Caroline's Promise, we had a couple of big events in here where we did a big production with lights and stuff, so, but it's not really, board meetings and planning commission meetings are the main thing, and then Mr. Howard has his sports activities and awards programs in here. Sheriff's Office typically does his annual awards banquet and stuff in here.
It's pretty much the same thing, and the reason I asked, and you kind of touched on the thing I was thinking about, is we have not talked to a theater group or the theater group in the county about lighting a stage in particular, right? We didn't, we didn't say, what would you guys do?
No.
Okay.
The company that we actually looked at, that's working through Daley, they actually go to events throughout the country, and their job is to get there and to set up an entire event from nothing.
Right.
So this is what they do day in and day out. There's new lighting going up above you, new spotlights are going in to help light the area up, because the camera does do.
But the reason I ask you that, now, the reason I ask you that is there, there is theater lighting called Klieg lighting, I don't know if you've ever heard of that?
I have not.
I have experience with somebody who knows a little about theater, and each one of those lights is $4,000, and I looked them up on the web. If we had two or three of those, we're, we're lit up for board meetings and things like that. You've seen them before?
Turn on your mic, Mr. Emerson.
I have a Master of Fine Arts and Scene and Lighting Design in the theater.
Okay.
I did it for 10 years.
Well, what the heck are you doing as a lawyer?
He couldn't make it as an actor.
So those, those mounted in the ceiling wouldn't work?
I wouldn't use them for a meeting like this, not so.
I just, it's a lot of money to spend just to light us up. You know, that's my opinion, it's a lot of money to light us up, but okay.
Mr. Black?
Mr. Sealy, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the additional money, the money that's in the budget, plus the additional money for a total of $76,000 for the upgrades to the stage lighting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We're all clear on the motion? We're good? As presented with? Jeff added the 43 or 41,000.
I did, the total of 76.
Right, so it's as presented. Why not? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have a motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item 4A, I don't know who's gonna lead off with that, is that Mr. Fincham?
Virginia Sports Complex.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what was formerly presentations, Mr. Sean Mills from the Virginia Sports Complex is here. He was requested to come to the board meeting to give the board an update on the progress with respect to improvements at the sports complex. The board remembers, not quite a year ago, I think it was May of 2019, the board approved a special exception permit to amend certain conditions for the sports complex related to their onsite sewage disposal system, as well as improvements to the park facilities related to their onsite sewage disposal system, as well as improvements to the park facilities itself. And Mr. Mills is here to address the board and answer any questions that you may have.
Is there a formal presentation on this, or is it a discussion? Well, I was gonna say, I'm sure there are a number of questions. And we can, I don't know if you want to start with opening statements, or you want questions, however you want to handle that.
Sure, my name's Sean Mills, good to see you guys, it's been almost a year, everybody's looking well. What I was gonna do is go over improvements that we've made or that are still in the progress of being made, things that we've started but just haven't been finished yet. Gonna go over a list of those things, and then talk about some of the things that because we're able to do these things, we've been able to either create stronger relationships with people that we already had relationships with, organizations we already had relationships with, or new relationships with organizations that we wouldn't have been able to have, that we weren't able to do in the past. So that's what I was gonna start off with. Is that okay to?
Well, let me just start with, I guess the issues are, when the, when the special exception was revised last May, there were timelines set in the special exception, as I read. And so we've, we've actually elapsed, eclipsed all of those timeframes.
I presume you're talking about to get the drain field installed.
Well. Well, I wasn't here in May, I was here in March when you talked about turf fields, you were gonna move out on that because if you got the drain field, it was gonna give you money to be able to do that. Has he seen the letters that we have? Because we see a number of issues, Mr. Underwood?
Why don't we let Mr. Mills present whatever he has? Then I'd like to hear from Mr. Whiteman.
Okay.
In terms of the conditions that he's actually seen there, and then talk about some of the issues that we agreed, some of the things that were supposed to be in place that are not in place.
That'd be fine.
So I'd like to hear.
We'll start with you, we'll start off with however you want to present.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm just gonna go over a list of things that we've done already and then kind of talk about what, what they, what they are allowing us to do. So, I don't know who's been there now, but we have a 40,000 square foot field house that was very poorly insulated, if you can even call it insulated at all. So we insulated the field house, that has allowed Caroline County baseball and softball teams to, high school softball teams to be able to come to our facility and workout over the winter time. That hadn't been done before. Also, Carmel School has been in there with their basketball teams because they have so many, they have so many different teams and only one gym, they can't practice everybody at the same time in that gym, so they're always having literally four or five days a week to have somebody in our facility. Sorry, I look like somebody had a question for me. We inspected and replaced a lot of the lighting and the ballast and things in the field house. We had to flush the septic drains and the pipes, it was just old and just needed to be done. Painted the interior of the field house. We put 7.5 tons of asphalt millings on the road and in the parking lots to repair a lot of that, the problems that were there. We put sand, I'm sorry, we sanded, grinded, and polished the concrete floor in the lobby. We had to remove, there was this old nasty rubber flooring that was in the, in the lobby and the restaurant area of the field house that was just disgusting, and truthfully, anybody's ever been in a locker room, it just kind of holds that sweaty smell that was in the field house, so we took that out and we're in the process of still polishing the concrete floors and painting those. Painted the classrooms that are there, replaced all the ceiling tiles, power washed walkways and exteriors of the concession stands, shampooed carpets, repaired portions of the basketball gym floor that needed repair from, from water damage. Services repaired, all the equipment, I had to replace some of the equipment, like mowers and tractors and things like that to take care of the fields. See, where'd I get to here? We had to clean and repair a lot of the outside drains on the large and the small quad baseball field, so there's, there's four 90-foot diamonds and four 60-foot diamonds, in case you guys don't know, we call them the large quad and the small quad. So there's a lot of problems there, we took care of all that, cleaned the vents and the gym and the turf, turfed areas. We put 175 yards of turfis and dry mix on the fields. What that, what happens is, believe it or not, over 15 years of playing baseball, anybody that knows anything about baseball, like if there's a bunt or a little swinging bunt or something like that, the pitcher has to cover first. Believe it or not, when people are practicing that and everything, it actually creates a bowl there that you can't really see, but every time it rains, you have standing water there. So we had to take 170 yards of different mixes and put in areas like that, other areas also, but that's just an example. Replaced 80 square feet of drywall in the gym, that's actually in the process of still being done. We're actually going back with plywood instead of drywall, so we don't have the same issues that we have now. Repaired a lot of leaks in the roof of the field house, installed 80, an 80-foot French drain to make sure that the water damage that happened in the gym didn't happen again. A lot of landscaping, removing trees and shrubs and helping with drainage around the fields. We replaced two floating pumps in the irrigation pond. Basically, what you have, we have an irrigation pond that the pumps that were in there were on the bottom, and they had actually burned out, so we couldn't irrigate the fields last year, so we went back in with two pumps that actually float on the top of the water. So they don't get as much of the silt and muck and stuff from the bottom, so they, they last a lot longer. So replaced two of those, repaired one of the pumps in the pump house that was damaged because of that. Made repairs and upgrades to the irrigation system on all eight fields, including replacing sprinkler heads. Replaced a tractor, we actually are in the process of replacing a tractor, we had to replace an ice machine. Repaired and replaced netting on the exterior batting cages, we removed 20 yards of just debris, just stuffed tarps and old things that have been there for 15 years that were no good anymore, that just need to be tossed out. Repaired turf on the outfield, on the three large, three of the large fields. Upgraded computers and our internet, and we had to totally redo our website. That, plus some consulting fees and marketing fees that we had to do to just figure all this stuff out, came to a total of $191,587. That's how much money's been spent there on improving the place. Now, because we were able to do that, we have, let's see if I can find my other list, here we go. Just kind of what that's, what that's brought us. I'll start with baseball and softball, so we've got, we, there's an organization called Perfect Game, which is the largest tournament company in the United States.
Can you?
Yeah.
Let me just say this, the most pressing issue for us is condition number 19 that actually deals with, well, actually. We may want to hear from Mr. Whiteman first, rather than, let's, let's get everything on the table that we need to talk about because it's, 19 is the pressing issue, which should have been resolved. You had 180 days, correct?
Okay.
And that should have been resolved by the special exception when it was approved in 180 days. So from May, I mean, 180 days are consecutive, you don't get to like pick and choose them. So it started when it was, when it was approved, and it went on from there, we're long past 180 days.
Right.
So.
We're ready to do it, we just can't do it because of the conditions of the ground.
We're gonna have, Mr. Whiteman, do you want to come forward with some of the other reports? Let me, let me bring our concerns to the table since we have a number of them.
Yes, sir, I got a complaint, and of course, Caroline County has not adopted the Virginia Fire Code, so the enforcement's done by the State Fire Marshal's Office. Rob Parker, who is our deputy fire marshal, and I went through the sports complex and we found two pages of violations. And to be honest with you, the sprinklers and the fire alarms, which require annual maintenance, haven't been done since 2012. Whether the sprinklers and the fire alarms operate, we have no idea. And the egress lighting in a lot of locations was either down off the walls, wasn't operating. Exit signage was not illuminated and not working, means of ingress were blocked. No maintenance had been done to the fire pump house, because the only way for the sports complex to exist in that square footage is to have sprinkler coverage, and we have no idea whether it'll operate or not. The deputy state fire marshal issued a notice of violation to a gentleman who said he was in charge over there and gave him maximum amount of days to get it fixed. A lot of that will require permits, and no one's been in my office obtaining any permits. Additionally, on the left side of the building, there's a BMP that was required to collect the stormwater from the property back when the original site plan was approved. It not only blowed out, but the bottom of the BMP is destroyed and it's, it's picked up silt and took it about 80, 90 yards down range into the RSA. And in your letter, Mr. Pennington from my office addresses that, and it's a violation of not only the site plan, but of DEQ. It's my opinion that none of the facilities has been maintained, nor the, the features that are required for the stormwater runoff have been maintenance and any upkeep done. And, and to be honest with you, the state fire marshal's coming back to inspect, and if he's not satisfied and turns it over to me, I'm gonna shut the doors, because I, I don't feel safe to have people in there. And that's by the Uniform Statewide Building Code.
Questions?
Mr. Seale, I've got several out of my.
Questions, I mean, several questions?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to address, or Mr. Mills and Mr. White.
Sure.
Just a.
Standby.
Just a couple of things, ever since I've been on the board, Mr. Whiteman, Mr. Mills, we've been, we've been dealing with this place. We gave, I know you're like the third owner since I've been on the board. And Mr. Colley, you can correct me, we've given, there was one part of the original deal and those members that were here before I was, that there was supposed to be a sewer line, correct? That was to go down, built by the, built by the sports complex. And we kept on giving a, how many times did we give a annual, we extended it, we give a four, three, or four? Five, five extensions, in which every single time, hey, we'll give you more time, we'll give you more time, and it was always gonna be done. It was always gonna be done. It was the next thing, it's, it's gonna be done next, and it hasn't. And so then, Mr. Mills, you come in, you told me that you own it. I don't believe it, I don't even believe you the owner. I mean, so anyway, and you had told me in a meeting and told us in a meeting, no, no, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm speaking right now. Okay, okay, I'm speaking, hold on. Okay. And a deal is two ways. You told, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna turf it, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we need the, we need the break because we're gonna invest. Well, you haven't. A deal is two ways. A deal is two ways, and when I see this, this report, when I, when I, the state fire marshal report? Where there's 10 violations? 10 violations, and you're letting the public, you're a business owner, and you're letting the public come in when you have 10 violations? A sprinkler system and a fire extinguisher system that hasn't been updated since 2012? And we're supposed to be up there continuing the special exception? Do you think it's okay? And Mr. Whiteman, how was the condition of the road going into that place?
Um, actually, the road from Route 1 and even to the county fair is potholes, and then getting back into the sports complex and around the side where the BMP is, there's real erosion, and by that I mean small gullies where stormwater has washed away.
So the moonscape that it looked like for the agricultural fair last year has been addressed just a little bit?
I'm sorry?
It looked like a moonscape going to the agricultural fair last year.
Yeah, and that continues on back.
Is it, is it still a moonscape going in, is it still avoiding craters?
Yeah, there's potholes.
Oh, yeah, so that hasn't, that hasn't been taken care of. Number two, we have a letter in here, we have a letter in here from the, who was, who was the pump in the hall? Who does it for them?
Doug Sept.
Doug Sept, they said, you're not paying your bills. There's a letter there that the bills aren't being paid. So there's number two. Number three, the BMP, the BMP, it's blown out. That's like, that's a DEQ requirement, that's Chesapeake Bay Act. Blown out. Number four, state marshals, state marshals.
For me to address these things, I can't keep up with all this.
You have addressed it, I'll just be honest, you've addressed it, you've talked, you've talked, you've talked, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest with you. I mean, I just don't believe you anymore, and I'm sorry I'm being harsh, but the reality behind it is you get up here and you talk.
I mean, it is harsh. Accusations that you can't back up.
I can't back up the accusations that there's 10 lists from the fire marshals?
But calling me saying that I'm not the owner? Where's that coming from?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him address your first four, because yeah, I'll let you start with the first one, though.
Which, which is the first one?
The owner part that you took, being the owner, the exception you took to.
I own 90% of the units that are part, that, that are the, to the corporation. So I don't know if that doesn't qualify me as the owner or not, but I'm, I own 90%.
Do you have that on paper?
Pardon?
Do you have that on paper, do you have the transfer?
Yes, I don't have it with me, I didn't know I was gonna be accused of that.
I'd like to see that.
No problem.
Mr. Black, let's, let's stick to the real issues of, there are issues that are, that are pertinent to this, that are real.
Yes, there are, and I would love to address each one of them, because I, I, I agree with your concern. The fire thing was, was brought to my attention two weeks ago or so, I think, is when the gentleman was out there. Immediately, we got a contractor in there, I think, two days later, to give us an estimate on exactly what needs to be done, and we're waiting for them to tell us exactly everything that needs to be done, what the price is gonna be, and we're gonna have them work on it. I can't do anything more than that. I didn't own the place in 2012, I was not aware of that, that is on me, that the last year that I didn't know that that, that needed to be done. I will tell you this, the management team that was in place there when I purchased the place, none of them are there anymore because of issues like this. We have an entirely new team that we're going through and doing everything we possibly can as quickly as we possibly can.
I will take exception because you said in your opening statements that you've worked on the road, and I will tell you that I drive on that road frequently.
And it's bad.
And thank God I have a Chevy 2500 four-wheel drive that I can actually navigate, because.
So I would love to address that also, because I agree with you, and the, the one thing that we get the most complaints from is that.
In your opening statement, you said that you, I mean, they will all tell you that they don't see a grain of anything new out there. So I will say that that's.
You know, invoices or whatever, the work was done.
If you're paying invoices for the kind of, kind of work that's been done, then that's, that's a whole other issue. But it is, it is not appreciably better. So. He wanted to address his four things, and I'm, I'm trying to get him to the four.
No, let's just, let's just cut to the chase and ask him where he is.
Your mic off, ready?
Special exception is one of the questions first that we should address, because that's what's in our board package. I agreed, I, I was one of the people who voted to give them an extension, I thought they would do better. I am disappointed, because according to the special exception, you didn't do any of the things that we asked you to do within the 180 days, and that was last year. That's my concern. I'm not even gonna go back three years before that, when Mr. Rababi was here, and we heard nothing but bait and switch, bait and switch. But we felt we wanted to be supportive of a business in the county.
Yes.
Regardless of whether you knew of those situations, I say that you and Mr. Rababi should have had some conversation, because those issues, the driveway, the pump and hall, all of those things still exist. And we're here now with a even greater issue of public safety in terms of the fire marshal's violations. I'm at the wall, this is my district. I'm at the wall. I'm not budging anymore. I'm sorry that you're in this situation, but unless you can tell me that you can wave a magic wand and fix this up tonight, I have no support for you. Want you to understand that.
I can't wave a magic wand. But I would tell you that we're ready to put in the drain field, the only reason we couldn't is because by the time that we got everything through, all the permitting and all that stuff through, the ground was too wet and you can't do it. So we literally are at the season now where it starts getting dried out and we can actually put the drain field in. So we are. So we are a month away.
You were here for the state, for the county fair presentation. It didn't rain the entire time in June.
But that wasn't on us. We have to wait for the permitting process and for the health department to get back to us and everything. That didn't happen until well into the fall.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I've had plenty of people deal with the health department for permits on commercial projects, not heard one gripe and they started projects in weeks.
I'm not griping, I'm just, I mean, I can...
Well, I'm with Mr. Underwood, I am, I am at the wall with, with all of this. But, Mr. Fincham, can I ask you a couple of questions, please? Because I think we have a couple of options of what we can do. I'd just like to understand where we are and what our options are in terms of the special exception in the process.
Board approved the special exception, I believe it was May of 2019.
There's a special exception in our package somewhere because I can't see.
It should be.
No, just the condition.
Just the condition is, just nineteen.
Whereabouts? Because it's not in four.
Yeah, it's under presentations because I moved it from presentations.
From the front, presentation.
The special exception approval should be on the second or third page. Okay. So the board approved the special exception, I believe it was in May of last year. That special, it was specific to condition nineteen. Previous special exception had somewhere around twenty-two or twenty-three conditions to that approval. The request and what the board approved was specific to condition nineteen. Previous condition nineteen required the connection to public sewer within a two-year timeframe. What the board approved last year was the alternative to allow an onsite sewage disposal system in lieu of connecting to the public system. One of the conditions of that, in addition to the timeframe for that to be installed, was the approval of the facility's improvement plan. Didn't necessarily have to be a drawn-out plan, but, you know, a document or something that indicated what the improvements to the facilities would be. So that is the condition nineteen that is in place right now, is this alternative onsite sewage disposal system, which was to be installed within, I think it was a hundred and eighty days, as well as board approval of the facility's improvement plan for what improvements would be made.
So, one of the things, and I'm just going through alternatives, Mr. Underwood, just so that we all understand, is we could revoke that special exception, which would just have to do with the onsite sewage disposal and it wouldn't affect the rest of the conditions already on the sports complex because if you pull the whole thing, we'll lose all those conditions. Am I correct?
Well, before you revoke anything, you'd have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, I understand.
So you'd have to, to, just like the regular public hearing process, you would have to authorize a public hearing. You could hold a public hearing and consider a revocation of the special exception permit that was approved last year. If approved, and I'll look to counsel to verify what I'm saying, if you, if you did revoke that permit, then previous condition nineteen would be in place. What you're revoking is the amended condition nineteen.
He'd have to go back to connect, he would have to, he would have to then connect to this county sewer system.
That's correct.
With that special exception.
Under that scenario, that's correct. You're also in a position then when you're, you would still be in violation of that special exception permit as well because if you recall, the timeframe had long since passed by which that connection was supposed to have been made. So you potentially have still a violation with respect to the sewage disposal system.
But we could also, in the renegotiate, in the public hearing, set a timeline on that. Well, they'd be the same condition. Is that true, Mr. Emerson? Could we, can we, or do we, where are we with that? If we go back, if we revoke last May and he's got condition nineteen of two years to connect to the county wastewater system, which he's already bypassed, I mean, we've eclipsed that. Where does that leave us if we revoke that particular situ, if we revoke that special exception?
Both of them? Then you wouldn't be able to operate the facility because you wouldn't have a special exception.
Can we, can we do anything about nineteen? Can we create a new nineteen with that public hearing, knowing that we're gonna, if we were gonna revoke that, could we then change nineteen?
No, I'm not sure that you could. That we'd have to look into that, but I'm not sure that you could do that on your own motion.
So what would have to happen for that to take place? Would they have to actually petition?
You might have to have an application from the owner.
I think your action is limited to the revocation of, of, of the, of the special exception permit itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forehand?
Just wanted to throw some comments out. I, too, had a septic system that I had to get installed larger than normal and it was delayed months and months and months last year, to the point that I started getting concerned that my earnest money was gonna end up in Tahiti somewhere and started doing research on remedies. It's one of those, it is one of those things that they need dry weather, things back up. I understand it. Like I've said before, when he came in May, a lot of counties like Caroline are dumping millions of dollars to build something that we already have built in our facility. He is doing something, it's been a loser for the owner since day one. He is trying to turn that around, close to day, day two. I, I understand, I think I understand y'all's perspective, I also understand, I believe Mr. Mills prioritizing, he has to get, he has to have revenue, in order to have revenue, he needs to make it attractive, he needs to do the things that he's done. He spent almost $200,000. We don't have a roadway standard for non-public roadways. We're busting him on this road. It's for his customers, okay? At the end of the day, it's for his customers. If they can't get there, then they will stop coming, they won't, and his business is affected. We don't have a standard that he has to build to. So I, he's working on that. He doesn't have a money tree. I know he's gotta fix the BMP, which is gonna be expensive. I would be happy to hear a very tight frame if he has a contract issued for the construction of the drain field. I would love to have a timeline if he has that worked out. And the BMP restoration, those are two, in my mind, those are the two primary things besides the code stuff, which is gonna shut the building down if they didn't get that done. So those are, I guess, the three big things in my mind that he has to shift gears on and open up his checkbook again to get him done, but he's working, he's spending money, he's doing the things that we want him to do, just maybe not in the order that we want him to do them, but he's, he's improving the place, he's getting business, he's getting interest. He was cut off before he got, had a chance to actually talk about some of the other organizations that are starting to build his revenue base for the facility that I would also like to hear about. I do know that he has some other local organizations that are working there. I know that our high school programs are working out there or have worked out there. Know that there's some volleyball clinics being held there, AAU teams are playing there. So he has to get those code things fixed or those go away instantly and that's, and he knows that. Mr. White, man, I don't doubt your intent or you'll do exactly what you say and you should do that if they don't get taken care of. But anyway, it's, the ball is rolling in the right direction. That's all I'm, I guess, is what I'm trying to say and he's writing checks, he's gonna write, write a whole lot more and I would like to give him some consideration because he, he bought into this mess less than a year ago.
That, Mr. Forehand, and I appreciate your passion and the reality of it is, if you build a building, you buy a building, you want people to occupy it, the first thing you need to do is ensure that it's safe. Inspections for safety are required yearly in a building where people come, not every ten years, not every five years. Special exception that I voted on clearly spoke about the sewage, I mean, the...
Drain, drain field.
The drain field. That was what, I can appreciate you doing all the other things that you've done, but you haven't addressed the issue that's been going on for six years.
Not to interrupt, I wouldn't phrase it as we haven't addressed it. We have, we've had the engineers out there, we've drawn the plan, we are ready to go on that. We literally are waiting for a few more weeks of dry weather where we can install it.
Since la, okay, excuse me then, Mr. Mills, let me rephrase.
I understand, I don't mean we are negative, I'm trying my best to get that drain field in because it's better for us to.
I just want you to understand my perspective, that's all. I wish you nothing but the best, but if I go down here and buy a lemon and the motor blows, it's my lemon because I didn't do the research. That's on me, no matter how much money I put into it. I can put new wheels on it, I can put new paint job on it, but if the motor's not there, it's not going.
True. I think, along with that analogy would be if you go to get the thing repaired and the mechanic says it's gonna take two weeks to order the part and it ends up taking four weeks for the part, you still got the lemon, you still gotta pay for it, yes, sir, but you're kinda at the, you're, you know, at the best of getting that party.
Called a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, that's where I am, there's no doubt, I knew it when I bought the place. I don't mean to sound like I didn't.
Right.
I'm just, I just want you to know that it's not because we haven't addressed the issues. I'm literally waiting for dry weather so we can put that in. It's not an issue where we haven't done anything and I don't want to throw the previous owners under the bus. I don't know what they did and didn't do, it doesn't seem like much was done, but we've taken steps to get that thing in there.
I can just tell you, my interpretation then, Mr. Mills, is that there hasn't been enough done. That's my perspective.
I understand.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, sir.
If I may, tell me very quickly where you are with the potential five-year contract you have.
Their lawyers are drawing up a contract to give to my lawyers to redline it is where we are.
So in that negotiation, do you expect it to be completed in the short term or the long term?
From my side of the equation, I think we're pretty much done. We've done the verbal back and forth and we've got verbal agreement in place, basically. I'm waiting on their lawyers to give me a contract. I don't foresee there being a lot of red lines in there.
Just to let you know, and I may have said this before, the sports park, we're doing the census this year and we rearranged the districts. Mr. Underwood has had the sports park since our last census. The sports park was originally in my district, so I feel a particular affinity to it to make sure it's successful and that's why I wanted to give you that additional time.
I appreciate that.
It seems like, and it's very rare, but I have to be the one who's gonna try to work out a compromise. What I would like to do is I would like to give you the thirty days to get the sewer system up or the drain field up. I would also like to give you in that thirty days, time to get your contract signed. Okay? Sound fair?
The drain field definitely, I will push...
See, I started with the contract first and you said, yeah, it's done.
No, I guess all I'm saying is the ball's in the other, in that company's hands, so I'm pushing for that and I will continue to push. The drain field, a hundred percent, you know, unless it rains the next thirty days in a row or something like that, I'm being told.
It's gonna rain next week. It's gonna rain a lot this week.
I'm being told that spring weather hits, typical spring weather hits, we're gonna be able to put it in.
Okay. So you have, you have an option there, you feel fairly confident there, you feel fairly confident that your contract will come out. I would like to see your com, your project be the asset it was originally designed to be. I think we all wanna see that. However, I have this giant hammer that I'm gonna hit you with if you don't make it happen, okay?
Yes, sir.
And that's the guy behind you, but I'm, it's also the fact that I'm gonna make a motion that we have, that's what Kevin does, I'm gonna make a motion that we have a public hearing to revoke your special exception permit.
Which one?
The second one, for the first meeting in May. This is the first meeting in March, that gives you almost two months.
Yes, sir.
In two months, you should have the drain field done, you should have your contract done, you should come in here, as Mr. Forehand said, you've done great things to the building, you could say, look, I've got building, I've got revenue, give me a shot and we will probably in that case just cancel the public hearing.
I think that's more than fair.
That's fair?
I think it's more than fair, I...
But don't tell anybody that I'm fair because I got a reputation.
I don't know the date, I don't know the date for the May meeting, but...
It's the second Tuesday in May. Well, we're gonna work on that, I think it's gonna be...
But I'm just saying, whatever it is in May...
It's May tenth, May ninth, something like that.
The drain field?
Will be done.
No doubt. The contract is a little bit more of a variable, but I think two months should be a good enough timeframe. I would be...
That's fair.
I would be shocked and amazed if we didn't have that.
Okay. So, so, we understand, we're all on our last chance. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep the bear away from you for another month, but the bear's gonna be all over you if you haven't done that in the two months we have, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we...
I'm gonna be a bear on some other folks if that hadn't been done because it's...
Oh, you don't have to worry, you're gonna have enough here. I'm gonna make a motion that we advertise to revoke the public hearing, revoke the special exception, number nineteen for the Virginia sports park for our first meeting in May. And that gives him a chance to finish everything.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Black?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna go ahead and vote no just because I think we should be doing this sooner than that. I mean, I, there's no, there's no excuse for the public safety, he said people going into that building.
Well, he's gotta fix the public safety issues before anybody else goes in.
That has, that has nothing to do with anything else. If he doesn't fix that, he can't open it.
The fire marshal told us exactly what we have to do in the, in between the time, now and the time that everything is fixed, we're already taking, we've already, immediately we took measures to make it all that happen.
The county has no control over that.
Other than he has to get... We took action immediately, like right that second meeting.
The state fire marshal will close you down if you don't do it.
Mr. White, man, a permit needed for that?
Yes, sir.
So you'll know if that's moving forward and who's doing it?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second and I'll do a roll call vote, hearing Mr. Black's last comments. Mr. Forehand?
I'm voting for, voting for the May.
A May. Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well because I do think we, sabotaging the whole project at this point doesn't do us any good nor you and I think it's, but this is it, this is fair warning. Motion carries and you've got, we haven't set our, I think there's an, there's actually agenda item to move our May meeting. It's gonna be a little different, but it'll be advertised and you'll know after tonight, but...
Basically, I have sixty days.
Yeah, basically sixty days.
Okay, fantastic. And on the first weekend of April, we have, I think, we have a tournament going on there that I'd love to invite you guys to swing by and take a look at if you want to. It's outdoors on the baseball and softball... If you, if you want to, it's outdoors on the baseball and softball fields.
Not Jeff and Mr. Underwood, right?
You're more than welcome to come, I would love for you to, we have, I think, just under 800 kids that are coming out and playing baseball and softball that weekend, so-
Well, you'll have the fire marshal issue to deal with for that, so that's-
Like I said, it's on the baseball and softball field.
Yeah, talk to the-
I know, I know, I just would like you guys to know that, you know, you're welcome to come out and see what we're putting together.
Have a good day, use your time wise.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
We have two options, folks, we can do public comment now and then go to closed session and be done, or we can take a break and come back. Let's, I've, I've got consensus, it is now past 7:30 and I'm going to, it's 7:55, I'm going to public, public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on any subject may come forward now. Three minutes and three minutes only. Jesse already had your 10 minutes.
That was another head. Good evening, I'm Jesse Rollins from the Mattapanah District. And I would just like to speak to you in less than three minutes on our school budget. Turf field and different things that our kids have come forward and talked about. So while you're still making decisions and all of that kinda stuff, I would like for you to really, really, really take in consideration what the school needs from salaries, et cetera, and to please make decisions that are favorable to our Caroline County Public Schools staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rollins. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Here are none, public comment is now closed. Capitol Project update? If you don't have anything, that's fine, you can say you don't have anything, that's acceptable.
It's in the packet, but we, nothing, nothing unusual, it's in the packet.
Um, possible change to the March 24th meeting and the May 10th board meeting?
Yeah, the March 24th meeting, we don't really have any public hearings or anything scheduled. I like to convert that to a work session in the EOC with the board for the budget. We would have the audit presentation and then work session on the budget, those are the only, only items I have, if that would be something that y'all would be-
I would love not to double up and have it just for a work session, that would be much better.
We're gonna use the 24th board meeting instead of a board meeting via budget or session.
It would start at six, you know, like, it would be like a regular meeting, but-
Right, in the EOC. Right.
For audit, and we'll present the audit, but the rest of it, I'd rather, I would prefer to work on budget and talk about tax increases or thereabout, or, you know.
Any, any issue to changing our 24th of March to our actual work session in the EOC? Cause I think that's actually probably more beneficial. Do we need to, it's still a meeting.
I know, but we're moving over there.
But we're gonna move the, we're gonna move the venue to the EOC.
And make it a work session, not a regular meeting.
Well, it's public, but there'll be no public comment.
I'm converting to a work session meeting in the EOC and that's- Just announce we're gonna be in the EOC at 6 o'clock for a work session.
The March 24th meeting will be in the EOC, it will be a work session, so there won't be public comment at that. Anybody's free to listen and it will be a work session for the board on the budget. Start at 6 o'clock in the EOC. It is open, it is open.
Yeah, it's open to public, no public comment.
The May 10th board meeting, I know there were some, we talked about it sort of at the last board meeting. Mr. Underwood, did you wanna move that to Monday?
But Mrs. Long didn't wanna move it to Monday, she's out.
She works on Monday.
No, she's out.
Oh, you're out of town.
I'm home after that, I, I put in my retirement notice, so.
Ooh. So you're not here on the 9th?
It's the 11th.
The, it's the-
Oh, it's the 11th, I got it.
12th is a Tuesday, 11th is a-
You might do it, Wednesday's the 13th. He's leaving at 12.
Do we wanna just move it to the next week?
We need to move it earlier, no, I need to, I need to move it earlier. Because if we-
Cinco de Mayo's the Tuesday before.
All right, good, we'll have a big crap. The, um, so if we, if we had the work session, then we need to then make some decisions, advertise the budget, advertise the tax rate, and then have a public hearing. Then after the public hearing, you have to wait seven days to adopt the tax rate and the budget. So I need to try to adopt that in early May, not late May, because tax bills need to go out for a June 5th tax collection. So we can't move into the 18th, it's gotta move back into the week of the 4th. And, and they- Yeah, 5th would work for me, but like-
So, so you're saying you're gonna present the budget April 4th?
No.
When are you gonna present the budget?
April 5th.
No, no, it's March 26th.
No, we, we just said-
24th. March 24th.
So-
It's a work session.
So that's not, that's not what we do. We're not gonna present the budget at a regular meeting?
Then when we gonna work on? And I don't have anything else for that meeting.
Okay, then we need to make, we need to make the 24th a regular meeting like we always do. And you're the only thing on the agenda.
But I need to meet over there, cause it's a whole lot easier to see the PowerPoint, but I will meet, you can do whatever you want.
That's not what we do, we, we have to, we should've had at this meeting the budget.
Didn't have it.
That's fine, I'm just saying, we should've had, that's, that's what we normally do, and then that gives everybody a month or two for work sessions and all that kinda stuff. So if you push the official presentation of the budget into April-
I wasn't planning, I was planning on, planning on doing on March. I'm not gonna be here next week.
You can't do the budget, you can't do the budget presentation during the work session.
Why not? It's gonna public, it's, it's- Public.
It's, it's not a regular board meeting, that would be breaking what we normally do, that's what I'm saying.
It's a regular board meeting.
I mean, it's, it's regular scheduled board meeting.
I mean, yeah, it's a regularly scheduled board meeting, and now we're saying it's a work session.
We've got some complex issues with the budget.
I, I understand, I'm, I'm trying to work with you, I'm just trying to say, that's not what we normally do.
I know. I don't, I, yeah, I, I think we're out of normal though at this point.
No, this is, what, what we did last year was the second meeting in March, and now we're not having a real meeting in March. And we give public comments.
They can still do, they can still do public comments at a work session, can't they?
No, public, there's no public comment.
Okay, this is what, this is, this is what, this is what we do. We have, we go into our regular meeting at 6 o'clock. You present the budget. Then we adjourn to have the work session. Then we come back at 7:30 for public comment, anybody who wanted to sit here and watch the budget presentation will be at 7:30.
It won't, we won't be done by-
We won't be enough, there won't be enough time.
An hour and a half isn't gonna, we'll, we'll blow through that in no time, with all the questions.
I mean, we come back here, we're gonna go over there and work on this stuff, then we come back here and let people talk, that's what we normally do.
So we're, we're gonna push public comment to-
7:30, that's when it normally is.
No, we won't be done, we, we, we'll be halfway through most of the budget and we'll wanna do public comment.
But he'll make his budget presentation in what, 15 minutes?
Probably less.
Less.
I mean, it-
No, he's gonna make the budget presentation like we always do and-
You're gonna force all the decisions on this, so you're gonna end up with a tax increase. I, but we haven't talked about anything, but I'm getting pressure from lots of different organizations about we're not doing enough and we're not having any talk about it, and then I've gotta come up with, with the numbers on it.
So we're gonna deviate from our normal schedule and pass it off?
Have a regular meeting, I will, I will present you a budget.
Have a regular meeting, let him present the budget. We talk for a while and then we come back at 7:30 and then we do a talk for a while.
What are you gonna talk about at 7:30?
Public comment.
Yeah, but we, we haven't talked about any num, I mean, so what you're telling me is you want Mr. Cully to just present us everybody's number that's-
Present his budget like he normally does.
Yeah, but we haven't said any, we haven't said any parameters for that.
We have public hearing in April anyway. Right.
We have a public hearing in April.
Right.
For the budget.
Not public comment. Public hearing is when they should talk on.
Public comment, this is a work session on the budget more than it is- Well, it's not, it's not what anybody wants to do, but I understand that right now, nobody, everybody's got different numbers in their head about where we need to go. And I've heard you, Mr. Thomas, no tax increase. So let me ask you, do we just level fund every organization in the county for this budget? Mr. Underwood's, yes. I mean, that's literally where we are.
But, but, but the process, as the process works, Mr. Cully presents his budget, it is Mr. Cully's budget, and then the board of supervisors works on the budget, and then we adopt it and it becomes our budget. Between his presentation and our adoption are many work sessions. I'm sure we're gonna meet with the schools again and sheriff's office, wherever else.
Do we want Mr. Cully, and I'm looking at every board member, do we want a level funded budget coming from Mr. Cully? All we're gonna do is what we did last year, and nothing's gonna change.
The key is, do you want a tax increase?
I think that's our starting point. Hon- honestly, I think that's our, our starting point.
Is what I think is gonna happen.
No, do we level fund everybody?
We level fund, and then we see where, where that gets us with our-
Why are we even, like, why are we discussing this right now until Mr. Cully presents his budget?
Because this is, there's been A, no guidance, and B, the 24th meeting, which is where he would present the budget, we, we haven't talked any numbers with no new revenue, is Mr. Underwood.
We have a little bit of revenue. So if Mr. Cully presents his budget on the 24th, correct? Then, like, if that's his budget based on your numbers and what's been projected from, from commission revenue, correct? Then I think we then need to have some conversation about the numbers, right, based on, that would be a work session. After that, after he presents.
Different day.
So we, we need a-
Where's the audit?
A different date?
Right.
We need a work session.
We don't have, I mean, that's all we have for that night is the budget. And the audit. Okay. Mr. Thomas is saying, I mean, what I'm saying is, do you want him to present just last year's budget, level funded, no changes?
When our, our assessments aren't gonna take effect until-
Not till January.
Not till January, next year.
Right.
So you don't have any new revenue right now? But that would take us, so without new revenue, we first have to look at what is, how, once he presents his budget, and he says, we're X number of dollars here, short, then we begin to, how do we remedy the situation? That's what the, we would then work, but we have to have this budget first to work from that. And the only way we can do that, since we know there's not any new revenue, very little new revenue, I think the starting point is to level fund, present the budget, and we begin to negotiate from there. Gives you a starting point. He made the budget presentation. With his idea whether to do tax increase or not? Yes, he did. That was at the work session.
Turn your mic on.
I would think that Mr. Cully would do the same thing this year, make his recommendations to us, and then we-
I agree.
We work on it. I don't wanna put him in a, a little glass where he has to do this way, let him do what he does, does a good job for us.
That's, that's kinda what I was saying, is make a budget presentation at 6 o'clock like we normally do, with whatever parameters you give him.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna work on it. So we're gonna go from the public hearing, I mean, from the pub, from the presentation, and then we're gonna go into a work session?
We will have no time to digest it then.
We never do anyways.
Have a work session?
We can always have another work session, but we've gotta then start-
No, but we just gotta go to public hearing after the 24th.
Right, I'm saying, so are we opposed to-
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we're, Mr. Thomas doesn't wanna do all of this in a work session. Well, then we need, then that's a different topic, when, when does everybody wanna meet again?
24th will be the presentation.
So, but we can't, so here's the, so are we gonna start the meeting at 7 o'clock? So that we go right out of that into public hearing, into public comment, and then into the work session? Because if we do his presentation at 6 and we try to go into a work session, we're never gonna get everybody out of there, back in here to do public, a public comment and then back into a work session. That, that's gonna be really hard to do. And I think we're gonna, and I do think we're gonna have to do another day, but we're gonna have to give him some guidance on where we all wanna go in terms of, are we gonna do a tax increase, how much? And where we're going in terms of budget?
And I, I can appreciate where Mr. Cully is, because does, does our school number look like 500,000 or, or does it look like 1.5 million? Does our, do our raises for our employees look like 1% or does it look like 2.5%? So those are, that's the guidance that he would be seeking when he's putting his budget together, because that's gonna dictate, by, those two things by themselves can dictate 5, 6, 7 cents in tax ra, in tax rate change. Okay, so we're not talking about $200,000.
Correct.
And, and without him having to live behind a spreadsheet for the next month, I think he's, I think it's fair for him to ask general parameters on the big ticket items, what are we all thinking, what's our consensus to at least start with? And that comes through generally at a work session.
Work session. So do we want, here's, do we wanna start our meeting at 7? Mr. Black, go ahead.
No, no, I agree, I just agree.
Do we start our meeting at 7, come in, do the budget presentation, do public comment, and then go into a work session?
Yes.
Is that the consensus? And then we can, from there, figure out if we need another budget work session? Cause we're not gonna figure that out tonight, there's no way. So we're gonna do the 24th meeting, starting at 7, public comment at 7:30, and the work session to follow in the EOC. Because he needs both, he needs the screens to actually do that. Work session. Now, the work session may not start till 9 o'clock. Depends how many public comments you get. You can be here a while.
It's, but it's not our, it's not our public hearing on the budget.
Well, no, and that's the point, that's the point I'm trying to make, is this isn't a public hearing on the budget. It, it is a budget presentation with no input from anybody on the board except Mr. Cully giving us the raw numbers with the revenue that we currently have and he can, and the, and the, and the audit.
Well, hell, we can, we can look at last year's budget and just say, hey, here it is, this is our starting point.
We've all gotta start looking this way.
When you start looking at Excel in here, it gets tougher.
No, no, you're gonna, okay. Let him, let him do the budget presentation and think like we normally would, so everybody that wants to see it can see it, and then we go into work.
Are we gonna do public comment at 7:30? So we're gonna no, do, well, Mr. Thomas said start at 6, have him do the, do the budget presentation, and then go to the EOC and have no public comment that night anyways. I mean, we don't have to have public comment, that is something that the board chooses to do. No, we do not.
That's a board courtesy.
We do not have to have public comment.
Right, that's one, right. Have the audit.
Start at 6 in here.
In here, with the audit first and then the budget.
Everybody gets to see the budget.
Move to the EOC, and it'll all be a work session.
And then we'll go into the EOC as a work session afterwards. Everybody, everybody good?
I, I do have another-
Mr. Black?
We're talking about, cause the whole thing with this was scheduling to start with, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, I do have a meeting, yeah, we're, we're kinda back to the original. If possible, the June meeting? If possible, the June meeting, which is scheduled for June...
God, I don't even have the calendar for June.
It's scheduled for June the 9th. That's the second Tuesday, I was wondering if we could, because a lot of us are in town for the fair, I was wondering if we could push it back to June the 16th, the night before the fair. I'm, I'm gonna be out of town, and I was just wondering if it was possible, the third Tuesday.
It wasn't that late.
What?
The county fair.
The county fair is 17.
Seventeen through the 20th.
So, I was just wondering, and most people are in town for that, a lot of people. So, I was wondering if we could just push, because I'm gonna be, I will be out of town that, um, that, that, that week. So, I was wondering if we could just push it back to the...
Well, can we fix the May meeting first, since we haven't done?
Okay.
We've, we've got time to fix the June, but I'm worried about the May meeting, because... So, we're gonna move the May meeting to the first Tuesday, is everybody good with that?
Yes, May 5th.
May 5th?
Yes.
So, can I have a motion to change the May meeting to May 5th?
Oh, sing, go to mind.
Yep.
So moved.
I have a motion to second any further discussion. All who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, the May meeting is now the 5th. And the June meeting, we can talk about, I, I really need to look at a calendar for June. I, I really have no clue. Sitting here, but we can put that on the agenda to talk about it at the...
Mr. Cully, can you make sure you have that at the...
At the April meeting, actually, probably better.
Hopefully, May 5th.
We'll adopt the budget May 5th.
Public hearing seven days prior to that, so we'll probably have a special meeting in April.
So, we'll probably have a special meeting in April. We're gonna have to have a couple of meetings, Mr. Underwood. But we'll set those after, at the work session, right?
We'd set all those on the 24th.
Right, we will set them then for April.
So, the good thing, the good thing is, we are still going to have a public presentation of the budget in here on the 24th.
We just won't have any public comment. Correct. Correct. All right. Do we have any closing board comments, or can we go right into the clo, if, if we do closing board comments, now if anybody's got any, ask Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black?
No, I don't have any.
Mrs. Long, Mr. Underwood, Mr. Thomas, and I have none. Mr. Thomas, if you would take us into closed meeting?
I move. I move that the board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the discussion of plans for public safety and security exemption of section 2.2-3711A 19 of Dakota, Virginia, to discuss plans to protect the security of governmental facilities, buildings, or structures, or information technology systems, and the prospective business or expansion of an existing business exemption of section 2.2-3711A 5 of Dakota, Virginia, to discuss a potential economic development project in the county about which no previous public announcement has been made.
Do I have a second? I have a motion to second any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any ayes? We are now in closed meeting, and we will come out if there's anything in closed session and vote on it, and then we will be done.
I need a motion, Mr. Thomas, to come out of closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the following motion that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors come out of closed meeting and certify to the best of their knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted were discussed and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion were heard, discussed, or considered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Mr. Foyan, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Black.
I so certify.
Mrs. Long.
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Thomas.
And I so certify.
We need a motion coming out of closed session to, my understanding is to first, to take the registrar off of the county network. Let's start there.
I'll make a motion that we isolate the county registrar's IT.
What words do you want?
System for the security as required by the state.
Segregate the IT infrastructure for the Caroline County Registrar from the county IT infrastructure.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need to fund, do you need anything for funding for that since you're already stretching his budget?
I think we would come back with an appropriation request.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything.
We got enough to get started.
No, for this year, it would be an amendment to this year's budget.
Amendment to this year's budget, but we'll come back later in May or sometime and get that cleaned up.
Anything else we need coming out about registrar hearing, none? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting's over.